During the time that the council is in session. May I request Member Villa Flores to lead us in prayer? Member Valesco to lead us in the national anthem. Panunumpa sa watawat ng Pilipinas and the Zambuanga Hermosa. Pabor, levanta. Me neither the Father, and Holy Spirit, amen. Sasakita ako ng todo. Diyos de todo, templo rakan me con usted. Bidisi con esto servidor público. Y guia el bagapinciamiento y corazón. Para sirbi con usted y el pueblo por honestia, sinceridad, y integridad. Por el bien y el progreso de todo, amén. Panunumpa sa watawat ng Pilipinas. Pakuhay Filipino, buong katapatan panunumpa sa watawat ng Pilipinas. At sa bansang kanyang sinasagisag. Na may dahil, patarungan, at kalayaan. Na pinaki kilos ng sambayan ang maka Diyos. Makakalikasan, makatao, at makabansar.
Can you say a prayer for the speedy recovery of Member Elago? Please let's all stand. Who's in the hospital? Just a silent prayer. Thank you.
The Secretary will now call the roll of members.
The roll call of members. The Honorable City Vice Mayor Romel Agan. The Honorable Miguel Alavar III. The Honorable Albert Attilano Senior. The Honorable Crisanto De La Cruz. The Honorable John Delipe. The Honorable Aljihan Edding. The Honorable Juan Clima Co. Elago II. The Honorable Vincent Paul Elago. The Honorable Benjamin Gingona IV. The Honorable Tungku Hanapi. The Honorable Cesar Jimenez. The Honorable Celito Macron.
Present.
The Honorable Lilibeth Nuno.
Present.
The Honorable Kimar Adan Olaso.
I will present.
The Honorable Elking Omaga.
Present.
The Honorable Josephin Pareja. The Honorable Jerry Perez. The Honorable Carrie John Piyok. The Honorable Rogelio Valesco Jr. And the Honorable Jimmy Villa Flores. There are eighteen members present, Your Honor. There is a call.
With the majority of the members present, the Chair declares the existence of a forum for the transaction of business. Next item.
Item I point one. Letter dated November 3, 2020 of the City Mayor. Respectfully transmitting memorandum number 1103, Series of 2020. Dated October 27, 2020 of the City Budget Officer. Seeking consideration on Resolution Number 41 and Appropriation Number 2 of Barangay Santa Maria di City relative to the change of project title. From Construction Improvement Rehabilitation of Drainage System at Don J.C. Lacandalo Drive, Santa Maria, to Construction Improvement Rehabilitation of Drainage System at Villa Santa Maria di City. In the amount of 250,000 pesos under the 20% Development Fund in the fiscal year 2020. I move for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Seconding Members Villa Flores, Vincent Paul Elago.
Hanapi.
De La Cruz.
Olaso.
Perez, Valesco.
Hanapi.
Olaso.
Jimenez, para.
Hanapi.
Hanapi. Olaso. Okay.
Sir, Sir Hanapi.
Objection noted already, Member Hanapi. Any objection? The Chair has none, the same is here.
I point two. Letter dated November 3, 2020 of the City Mayor. Respectfully transmitting the first endorsement. Dated October 27, 2020 of the City Legal Officer. Of the City, OIC of the City Legal Office. The City stating that pursuant to Department of the Interior and Local Government Memorandum Circular Number 2020-124 relative to the intellectual property rights protection. It is respectfully referring and transmitting a proposed ordinance entitled An Ordinance to Curtail the Sale, Rental, Transfer, Distribution, Manufacturing, and/or Production of Pirated Counterfeit or Fake Goods, Articles or Services, and for other purposes. With information that the said proposed ordinance is a template set and prepared by the DILG pursuant to the said DILG memorandum circular. And after having reviewed, the office found the same to be in order and recommenced to be transmitted to the Sangunyang Panglunsod for appropriate action. And for the information of the body, Councillor Mike Alabar filed a similar ordinance last 2011. So we will just consolidate this. And I move for its referral to the Committee on Ordinance and Resolution.
Refer to the Committee.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Generali Kwan, uh... Sponsors of that ordinance? May pa ang gahasig or... This, uh, my, uh, Alabar filed a separate, uh, very similar ordinance. But this one is just a referral to us, but may pa sponsors. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to manifest sponsorship of that proposed ordinance.
Please take note. In the drafting of the, kindly, uh... Make known your co-sponsorship when the item will be placed in the agenda for next week.
Yes.
For first three days.
In this regard, Mr. Chairman, for process for, uh, record process, I would like to be, uh, one of the principal sponsors, sponsor of this, uh, ordinance. Together with those who, Member Piyok, Member Gian Edding.
Noted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item.
Next item, Mr. Chairman. I point three. Letter dated November 3 of the City Mayor forwarding the letter dated October 30 of the Acting District Fire Marshal, Office of the District Fire Marshal, Region 9, Bureau of Fire Protection di City. Respectfully forwarding the technical specification with proposed fund allocation with a total amount of 75,396,018.27 pesos for the firefighting equipment in compliance with Resolution 1329. Noted and filed, Mr. Chairman.
Noted and filed.
I point four. Letter dated July 14 of the City Mayor. Respectfully transmitting the duly reviewed contract of lease to be entered into by and between the City Government of Zambuanga and Tadi's Outpost Acoustic Bar Pilar. Relative to the lease of food concession structure number six, Unit 1, Adi Hardin Maria Clara El Obregad Complex Food Concession Unis. With a monthly rental of 5,343 pesos, 343 pesos and 71 pesos. I move for its approval and authorizing the City Mayor to sign the same.
Any second, seconding Members Villa Flores, Piyok, Perez, uh, Valesco, Attilano, Nuno.
Olaso.
Olaso. Comment, objection, there being none, the same is here by approved.
I point five, may we recognize, Member Piyok.
Member Piyok is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of the SK 2020 annual budget of the following barangay: Pamukutan, Lapas, and included also in J point four and new business: Landang Laom, Tita, Tumitos, and Kuruan. And all those will be submitting on Friday at 5:00 in the afternoon. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Jointly, Mr. Chairman is seconded. Next item.
I point six, same, uh, may we recognize, Member Piyok.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Dr. Afdal B. Konting, 47, married, a nurse and a doctor, and a fellow of the Philippine College of Physicians, was recently appointed as the new Medical Chief of Zambuanga City Medical Center. Aside from his new and highest designation, Dr. Konting is presently holding top positions in and outside of the institution. He is the Chairperson of the Information and Communication Technology Committee, Public and Information Officer, and Head of the Public Affairs and Customer Care Unit. A member of the faculty of the Biomedical Engineering of the Ateneo de Zambuanga University, Head of the Public Health Unit, and Consultant of the General Intern and Community Medicine. Dr. Konting and his academic excellence in the field of medicine are among the factors that recognize him worthy of the position. He served as the Chief Resident during his internal medicine residency at the Zambuanga City Medical Center in December 2013. He had a master's degree in public health at Ateneo de Zambuanga University, a degree in Doctor of Medicine at Zambuanga Medical School Foundation, Ateneo de Zambuanga University, and a bachelor's degree in nursing at Western Mindanao State University, placing at the number seven during May 1994 Nursing License Examination. Dr. Konting also made remarkable publications that are truly valuable in the field of medicine. Some of his noteworthy publications is partnering, partnering community medicine in biomedical engineering as a means of addressing social determinants of health. An Ateneo de Zambuanga Initiative shifting paradigm in challenging times. Community-based medical education, providing quality rural health care, alternative family residency training program for rural physicians of a Philippine perspective and pinch of laughter. With his excellence in the field of research and medicine, Dr. Konting received numerous awards that are aspiring and noteworthy. He is the PMA Most Outstanding Physician of the Zambuanga City Medical Society, an outstanding community leader of Philippine College of Physicians, a most outstanding alumni in the field of health and a worthy for Mindanao Diamonds in Ruff. The search for the most outstanding young physician in community service of Pika, Pamu, and Rotary Club. With this, Dr. Afdal B. Konting at the helm of Zambuanga City Medical Center, every people of Zambuanga Peninsula and its neighboring provinces will continue to have a quality of integrated health care because of its highest level of specialty, services, training, research, especially in the most trying times. With this, Mr. Chair, together with Councillor John M. Delipe, and also, um, Councillor Lilibeth Nuno, we would like to pass a resolution congratulating Dr. Afdal B. Konting for having been appointed as the new Medical Center Chief of the Zambuanga City Medical Center. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Seconding Members Villa Flores.
Olaso, co-sponsor.
Jointly, Mr. Chairman is seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Co-sponsor, may I, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Next item.
I point seven, may we recognize, Member Vincent Paul Elago.
Your Honor. Let me just remove this for a while. Your Honor, um, a couple of days, last week actually, to be precise, I was, uh, called by the barangay chairman of Manikaan uh, because there have been some, uh... There was a reported, uh, smuggling, uh, activity in his, uh, area of responsibility. And, uh, Your Honor, after, uh, a lengthy discussion with the barangay chair, it was learned that it is not only cigarette, you know, cigarettes that are getting in, uh, through Manikaan, but other contrabands are actually, uh, allegedly uh, getting in, uh, the city through, uh, Manikaan. So I asked the barangay chair, what is your suggestion? What is your concern? The barangay chair said, uh, at that moment, that accordingly, uh, some of the people were under threat simply because, uh, they were involved. Not necessarily directly, but since they were just doing their responsibility, uh, they fell under threat, Your Honor. And so I asked, what do you want, what do you want from me? He said he is requesting for, uh, this representation to seek, uh, the support of the army uh, to establish a barack or a detachment in his, uh, area of responsibility in a strategic location in Manikaan. In fact, there is a letter, uh, that was sent to us and, uh, it stated exactly what I am saying right now. So, Your Honor, uh, given all this, uh, information, I'd like to pass a resolution earnestly requesting, Your Honor, the City Mayor, to request for the establishment of an army detachment at a strategic location in barangay Manikaan as augmentation of forces in our city's anti-smuggling efforts. I asked, why not just add the police, uh, detail in the area? Uh, accordingly, and it is written also, uh, in consideration that the Police Station 3 of Sangali is undermanned, uh, in, in relations to its area of jurisdiction. So, uh, paltat amen hente. Por eso tapidi sila si pwede, el army lang gayot. So este request tapasakita ko na di aton alka des, alcalde, um, Mayor Ben Clima Ko. I move accordingly.
Seconding Members Villa Flores, Edding, Piyok, De La Cruz, Perez, Valesco. Comment, objection, there being none, the same is here by approved. Next item.
I point eight, noted.
Florider. I, I had requested the City Budget Officer to, uh, come attend the session today so she can explain much better the contents of the letter. Can we take it up when she arrives?
Okay. Next. J point, item J, new business, J one. Memorandum number 089, Series of 2020. Dated November 4, 2020 of the City Legal Officer. Relative to the SP Resolution Number 1249 dated September 15, 2020. Requesting the City Legal Officer to, to clarify and reconcile the following two statements to it. A, that there is no need of the City Council's approval of the herein mentioned infrastructure projects based on the emergency procurement under the Bayaniyan to heal as one act. And second, there is, there is need for the City Council's approval based on the Kisumbing versus Garcia case decision. This is in connection with the four contracts for the construction of Ligtas COVID-19 Center Community Isolation Facility Building at Zambuanga EcoZone Freeport Authority, which were awarded to YN Builders and Supply, Bendemil Construction and Development Corporation, Altos Construction, AAG Hardware Construction and Enterprise. Mr. Chair, may we recognize, Member Macron?
Member Macron is recognized.
Uh, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Uh... If we remember, Mr. Chair, no, it's a committee hearing del last regarding condes mga project na isolation. And it's a committee, uh, recommendations del committee. The uno, uh, the recommendation, uh, remember, Mr. Chair, may I say, el cosa stipulated the letter di Judge Carbon. Donde tapri kunta kan, uh, el committee, si, isita pa ba kay talakupal del, del Sangunian, or hindi ya, no? So with the reply, Mr. Chair, can I lang, uh, observe, bakina reply di, uh, di aton City Legal Officer, kaya pone ele, uh, after lapse of one month and sixteen days. Okay, let's see, el, el tono, okay, Mr. Chair. Ya, ya, kita, kita nasangunian. Yan delay kita el di aton trabaho, trabaho i in response con este, uh, concern, no? One month and sixteen days daw, as of August 24, 2020. So, I just want to put on record, Mr. Chair, na I totally disagree. No, honeste, kasi yapon akin na, uh, letter di Judge Carbon, kay, it's a lakses el Sanguniang panlungsod, specialmente el committee del in pra. I take note, Mr. Chair. Can you series of mga dates, yan take note aqui. Este issue, yan di perka naton, nasangunian del July 3, no? Yan di presen nasangunian. And then del July 7, ay, entrasten na regularization, no? Under new business, donde este, uh, concern, yan di presen ak committee. Okay, that's July 7. And then after July 7, within the week, taas yo verbal follow-up ko na Attorney Kenneth, sabi sa si Attorney Kenneth, uh, taitan follow-up kita, mga attached documents para pwede kita man review el committee, man schedule el committee. Now, can you later see, adali kumikopya si Attorney Kenneth, uh, July 13, el isu letter, address po nel di aton mayor, no? Through the City Engineers Office, taitan follow-up kan, eh, kondes mga attached documents del mga projects, that's July 13. Okay? And then after July 13, Mr. Chair, uh, kontingas el di aton follow-up, until July 23, yutamen, can you later, Mr. Chair, July 23, yes yo letter, otresko, Attorney Kenneth, tan follow-up yo, el mga attached documents, no? And then after July 23, day after July 24, uh, can I get na reply, letter, yadali kumiko si Attorney Peldua, kasi Attorney Kenneth, uh, with the information that the requested documents are still with the City Legal Office for compliance. So as of July 24, tadi pasre, el mga, uh, dokumento daw na City Legal Office, uh, City Legal Office, tachecka pa sila for compliance, before indya ka naton. And then, uh, only until August 4, na regularization daton del August 4, ya, ya, entrasten na agenda, donde, uh, tadi, yadali ya sila, yan sapitya sila, el mga, uh, mga requested documents. That was August 4. Okay, so alikita ipadre sipi, el mga documents. Now, ll, ll pregunta, between August 4 to July 7, can yang delay, uh, regarding kondes eh, uh, concern? Hindi el Sanguniang panlungsod, Mr. Chair, but the City Hall? No, kay, can I get a series of follow-ups, tapidi kita el mga documents? Por eso, yatarda sila sumiti, yatarda tamikita, kineto, uh, dokumento. So after August 4, yuribikita, Mr. Chair, ya, lang kita dayo, el di aton committee hearing, August 12, a week after. Now, August 12, if you remember, Mr. Chair, el abuya lang, ya, el di aton mga contractor, noy abuya, el mga, yan invite kita mga representative, department heads from City Hall. So por eso, akna di aton, uh, first committee hearing, August 12, uh, yan, 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 ano kita, yan declare kita on recess, no? Kay, nagan abuya el mga department heads, it's a na kita di aton part two, the committee hearing, August 19. Pero yan take kita, may ka naton, another one week, para dali lang kita otresko opportunity, kondes mga department heads. Abuya, oh, it's so, uh, fortunate, na, na seka committee hearing, get appear ya sila, el mga department, department heads, even through, through Zoom, no? So, ya, after el di la appearance, ya pwede kita, as el di aton, uh, mga recommendations, Mr. Chair. So este ll, para on record ng, Mr. Chair, no? Uh, kedyo ponon record, kay, I, I totally disagree. Yan mention niyo con estedes, el mga, uh, dates, no? Pati el mga follow-ups ya sa kita, na noy, noy paltay el Sanguniang panlungsod at di aton trabaho, specialmente na di aton, uh, committee dal in pra, ya sa kita, el di aton trabaho todo. El, ya, yan delay lang, steprokao sa el di aton, uh, City Hall, yatarda kayod, dahil el mga dokumento. Akila, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much.
Noted, was the pleasure, Florider.
Noted and filed, Mr. Chairman.
Noted and filed.
Mr. Chair, may we recognize our, uh, Budget Officer?
Let's get back to item.
I point.
I point eight. Yes.
I point eight, letter dated November 5, 2020 of the City Budget Officer. With respect to the fiscal year 2021 Executive Budget of the City Government of Zambuanga, which was submitted to the Sangunian la September 28, 2020, for the authorization of the same by the August body, with manifestations and among others. Seeking the intervention of the City Vice Mayor to help facilitate the prompt approval of the city's fiscal year 2021 Executive Budget in order to address the concerns of all 98 barangays and to ensure the city's operations will not be disrupted in the fiscal year 2021, as city, as the city continue to define and enhance its services to the public, most especially in these trying times. Mr. Chair, may we recognize our City Budget Officer?
Yes, we'd like to recognize, um, Geraldine Delapaz to explain the contents of her letter for verification.
To the Honorable Chair, Vice Mayor Romel Agan, all the respectable members of this August body, fellow colleagues in the government service, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant warning to all. First and foremost, Your Honor, I would like to thank His Honorable Chair for, for this opportunity accorded to me to speak in behalf of the City Government before this August body, uh, for his swift action on my humble appeal. I'm speaking not only as a City Budget Officer, Your Honor, but as a Chairperson of the Local Finance Committee, who, under the law, together with all the members of the Local Finance Committee, uh, is expected to assist the SP members in the objective review and evaluation of the proposed budgetary programs. that the city government envisions to provide for its people in the ensuing year. And by implication of the law, we are also to apprise this August body as to the effects or consequences of its inaction, or whatever action, uh, that course of action that it may deem fit. Your honor, do I, do I have to read my letter, your honor?
I think, um, or.
Let me just emphasize.
Furnish with copies, so let, just highlight the what?
Okay.
The main point.
Your honor, I felt the need to seek your honors and, of course, of equal importance that of the all the members of this August body, their utmost consideration to treat this budget as a priority measure, to treat this budget with urgency. Because, um, any inaction or delayed action thereof would somehow be tantamount to a roadblock to the social, economic, and health programs that the city government envisions to provide for its people, for our people, especially in these most trying times. Your honor, in my letter, I emphasize four concerns, one of which, which I believe must be urgently addressed, is the effect on the preparation of the barangay budgets by all the ninety eight barangays. Your honor, if you may recall, in our twenty twenty one executive budget, we provided around thirty nine point sixty nine million appropriation that is intended to provide the four hundred five thousand annual subsidy to all the ninety eight barangays. In fact, this has been increased from two hundred fifty five thousand to four hundred five thousand with the hope that this increase would somehow assist our barangays in their COVID-related activities, especially that of their barangay health response emergency teams or the B Hertz. This may not be significant, your honor, but for others, no, for other barangays with meager resources, this is really of great help. Any delay of our appropriations would somehow cause the delay in their preparation of the budget. Why? Because this subsidy is treated as an additional source of funds in their barangay budgets. To the effect, your honor, if the barangay budgets will be delayed, uh, the S K budgets will be delayed as well. I believe, uh, our SP member, Councilor Pyok, can attest to this based on our experience, because any delay in the barangay budgets would always cause the delay in the preparation of the S K budgets. That is one uh first concern, your honor, and I'd like to apprise the body that the barangays are also L G U's. Or they are expected to submit their barangay budget on or before October sixteen, as provided under the Local Government Code. Second point, your honor, is this apprehension of the possible disruption of the city's operations at the beginning of the fiscal year, your honor. People will never understand if and when O C N R, for example, would not be able to do its mandate with respect to garbage collection, simply because we have no fuel procured. Most will never understand the complexities of the procurement process, but we in the government know for a fact that any delay in the procurement process would mean delay in the delivery of the basic services. That is the very reason why even the law, as provided under the procurement law, allows the early procurement activities for all government agencies to ensure that beginning, at the beginning of the fiscal year ensuing year, we have all the needed essential requirements such as the office supplies, the fuel, the drugs and medicines, even our security service or janitor services, your honor, are available at the beginning of the fiscal year. But this we cannot do if the appropriations ordinance is not yet enacted or approved. Consequently, the possibility of the continuous delivery of the basic services at the beginning of the year may be disrupted. My third point, your honor, um, let me, uh, remind the body that under the Local Government Code, D B M has around ninety days within which to review our appropriations. Basically, the review action would, uh, establish whether our appropriations is compliant with all the budgetary requirements, limitations, and other provisions of the applicable laws. Your honor, that is the very reason why the executive department submits the budget to SP as early as September to give you ample time for, to conduct at least an objective review and evaluation of this budget and hopefully to enact the appropriate appropriations ordinance as soon as possible time. Uh, it is best that we secure, we are able to secure D B M review action before the ensuing year or just at the beginning of the ensuing year. So to give us, no, it is a safeguard, uh, an assurance that all disbursements that the city will be making are in accordance with law and will, uh, will not later be disallowed nor declared inoperative by D B M or K O A. Because, your honor, sometimes, your honor, in the exigency of service, we all know for a fact that it is the executive department that makes the bolder steps uh to be able to address the, the concerns and needs of our people. And at the end of the day, it is us who, uh, what's that, respond or who have to justify to serious of if ever there will be possible A O Ms from K O A or other oversight uh agencies, I hope, uh, this body will consider this matter, your honor. And lastly, your honor, let me just read, with respect to the documents or reports requested from the concerned departments during the public hearing, or rather, budget hearing, please be informed that it needed pertinent data to enable the August body and the committee on appropriations to carry out a more objective review of the fiscal year executive budget. And the last analysis of the proposed expenditure programs were already made available. Again, the local finance committee and the department heads were we made ourselves available during this five days marathon budget hearing, so as to assist this August body in the objective review of the budget. And, your honor, that would be all. Uh, I do hope that, uh, we find in our hearts that this executive budget is not just a fiscal plan, your honor, but more of our roadmap to health and economic recovery, your honor. That would be all, your honor.
Thank you very much. Just a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, with respect to the review action of D B M, if it comes in twenty twenty one, let's say later part of January, are we limited in our use of the twenty twenty one budget while waiting for the review letter from D B M nine?
Not necessarily, your honor, as long as the appropriations ordinance uh is enacted before the start of the fiscal ensuing year, uh, the appropriations becomes effective at the beginning of the year. However, the review action from the D B M is important because it gives us an assurance that what the city will be spending or dispersing are in accordance, are in compliant with the budgetary laws or with budgetary requirements, your honor.
Thank you.
And we don't want, we don't want that later this disbursements will be disallowed or declared inoperative by the D B M. Or worse, uh, the apropos ordinance is declared uh inoperative in total, to the effect that we will be operating under a reenacted budget.
Any other, um, member who has some profound questions to our guest? Yes, member, yes.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, good morning, distinguished colleagues. You know, I started the morning by asking for a silent prayer for Jot Attorney Kimelago. Because he is confined in the hospital, doing well because of COVID. And I realize that this appropriation ordinance for twenty twenty one is really a pandemic proposed ordinance. The presentation made by the city budget officer is, to my mind, well taken. The presentations made, not only, I would say, the urgency, but rather, this August body has to act already on the proposed budget ordinance for next year. If we see the activities conducted, the last committee hearing that the committees on appropriation and committee on ordinance conducted its committee hearing, joint committee hearing, please correct me if I'm wrong, was on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. And if we count it up to today, it's already almost fourteen days. Eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. About fourteen days from October twenty seven. I recall when the last committee hearing on the twenty seven, I rose and asked, addressed the committee whether a report is to be made by the committee and when. And whether we have adjourned on that culmination or when we had the presence of all the department heads here. And I remember the distinguished, uh, John Delipet said that we are just on a recess. If the joint committee is on a recess, then when shall we terminate the joint committee hearing? We believe, Mister Chairman, that the concerns of the distinguished members like members Valesco, Bibi Elago, member Pyok, on that, uh, Chembra Vida Ayuda was addressed. And their concern through emotion was considered now to be part of the program in the Chembra Ayuda. When member, the distinguished member Gingona presented also his concern on the what's that be, the program, addressing the concern of the small business, that was also agreed and practically approved. That insofar as that concern, that will be addressed and ultimately approved by the body. If the department heads have submitted, as made mention by the distinguished budget officer, that the documents required in relation to what was requested during the conduct of the public hearings were already submitted, I don't see any further delay that we should incur in approving already this appropriation ordinance for next year. There are limitations that we have to face, as cited by the distinguished budget officer. And I'm very much concerned about that ninety day review period of the D B M. The I would like to ask the budget officer now whether any barangay in the city of the ninety eight barangays, whether a barangay, any one of the ninety eight barangays have already submitted their proposed budget for next year, because they are supposed to submit it already. But if that subsidy that we provided in the appropriation ordinance, proposed appropriation ordinance, is to be considered a source and to be included in the budget, that very clear, no barangay would be able to submit their proposed budget also for next year, simply because they are awaiting, as they know, this subsidy that we will be extending to them. So, i- i- the budget office would confirm that as of today, there is no barangay, no barangay would just.
That is right, your honor, and not one, uh, was able to meet the deadline. Not one was able to, uh, submit the required, uh, annual budget, barangay annual budget. But several barangays were already made inquiries in our office, whether or not, uh, they can already include the four hundred five thousand subsidy, your honor. Uh, actually, even the two hundred, the current two hundred fifty thousand can also, cannot also be considered as additional source of funds because, uh, there is no legal basis, your honor, because the appropriations has not yet been enacted.
We request of some members of documents that has to be submitted by departments in relation to matters raised during the executive session. May we know from the budget officer whether this was complied already by the respective department heads?
Your honor, I believe with respect to all the documents, reports that have bearing, uh, that would help assist the SP members to carry out an objective review of the executive budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, were already submitted to this body, your honor. Also, your honor, I am bringing with me a letter that I, I will submit to this August body uh informing that all the requested P P As, no programs or funding requests, uh, uh, discussed during budget deliberation like the twenty million request from Councilor Bijig Gingona for our M S N E, M S M Es will be incorporated in our Ayuda La Vida program. Uh, with respect to, uh, the request of Councilor Vip Elago, uh, amounting to twenty million for the product design and development, this can be accommodated in our fifty million Chembra Vida program. And with respect to the requests of Councilor Valesco for the provision of face masks and vitamin C for our frontliners and, uh, government workers and other vulnerable sectors, this can maybe, can be accommodated under the city health uh appropriation for drugs and medicines and other supplies. Also, your honor, with respect to the request of Councilor Alabar for the construction of a bridge, uh, this can be accommodated under our Lam Sam Appro, amounting to twenty seven million. And that of, uh, Councilor Keimer Olaso, uh, for the rehab or construction of slope protection and drainage systems, the same can be accommodated in our Lam Sam appropriation. And lastly, your honor, for the, with respect to the request of Councilor Pyok for the construction of local youth development center, the same can be accommodated under our Lam Sam Appro. Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I see the chairman, the committee on appropriation standing, Mister Chairman. In the meantime, I'll yield to the distinguished chairman.
Member Delacruz, strike of hands.
I would like to correct the wrong impressions of our budget officer. She claims that all the division heads have submitted their reports. That is false. Until now, from the C D R M O and the city health, they have acknowledged that they have not sent the report yet. And you know, we give millions, hundreds of millions of pesos, and we would like to know. It is not also true that we have caused the delay of the budget hearing. You still remember the month of September, there was a G O G order? You still remember the month of September, there was a GAG order? The GAG order was only lifted October? In spite of my health predicaments, I have reached out, and I will continue to reach out. But we have to be honest. If you are serious that we really tackle this, then we fulfill the requirements here. I'll read the contents of my latest follow-up letter. Doctora Amor D. Marabiti, City Health Officer, Dr. Arpolinario, City Disaster and Risk Reduction Management Officer. The Committee on Appropriations of the Sangguniang Panlinsub, this city, is hereby requesting the offices of the City Health and City Disaster Office, Risk Reduction Management, forward the submission of the following documents: La Vida Program, Purchase Orders, Purchase Boxers, Masters of Recipients, Inventory of Medicines, Drug Supplies for the Fiscal Year 2019-2020. CTOs, Medicine, Drug Supplies, Purchase Orders, Boxers, Master List of End Users, Inventory of Medicines, Drug Supplies for the Fiscal Year 2019 and 20. CDRMO Welfare Goods, Medical Supplies and Equivments and Other Equivments, Medicine, Drugs and Supplies, Purchase Orders, Boxers, Inventory of Supplies for the Fiscal Year 2019 and 20. Therefore-mentioned documents were requested during the budget hearings and the officers concerned promised to submit all requested documents to the committee. These documents form vital part of the budget deliberations, and further delay of submission may prompt this busy budget passage. The undersigned earnestly and humbly is reminding the aforementioned offices to immediately submit the requested documents. I am requesting the budget officer, just to be honest, if they have submitted reports, well and good, but wala pa. Nanay ko. Nagmatino tayo dito. Hindi tayo magsinulangin. We have to tell the truth.
Your Honor, I'm sorry if that was the impression, but again, if you may recall, I mentioned that a while ago when I was asked if the department heads were able to submit the necessary reports. My statement was, I believe that with all, with respect to the reports that have bearing to assist the SP members in the objective review of the executive budget, I believe they have already submitted. What the other documents that are being requested by this committee, Your Honor, are per se existing contracts or prior year's contracts, which I will leave it up to the body if the same will assist you or have bearing in these proposed expenditure programs for the ensuing year 2021. I'm sorry, Your Honor, if that was the impression, but again, I never mentioned that they have already submitted all the reports, except only, even in my letter, I've stated that only the reports that have bearing, that have in connection with the proposed expenditure programs were submitted because under the Budget Operations Manual, the budget deliberation, Your Honor, is actually confined, although, with all due respect, we attended the five-days marathon hearing, but under the Budget Operations Manual, Your Honor, the deliberation actually, per se, is on the targets or the estimated income and the proposed expenditure is submitted by the department heads, Your Honor. That's all, Your Honor.
Since I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman. Member De La Cruz was mentioning that the budget officer should tell the truth or what? And the budget officer is of the position, I think the position of the budget officer that insofar as the requested documents are concerned, that has bearing, that has bearing to the approval of the 2021 proposed budget were already submitted. And knowing, we are aware, I think the distinguished floor leader who has been presiding on this joint committee hearing, this joint committee hearing is not, is only on recess. Can we meet immediately and find out whether these reports are submitted, what are the reports that should be remitted, that has bearing to the approval of the budget office? And if it is the position of some members that all these documents that are requested has to be submitted and the same cannot be submitted, then once and for all, we have to decide on the budget, whether we will vote in favor or we will vote against it, Mr. Chairman. But then, insofar as the joint committee is concerned, I respectfully submit that we have to convene immediately for purposes of terminating the committee hearing, the joint committee hearing, and make immediately a report. Possibly by Tuesday, we'll be able to vote on the budget, once and for all. And rather than, I myself, I'm not, I did not use the word, I hope I be corrected, I did not use the word for that the, this proposed ordinance is delayed. But I know there might be some reasons or some that they feel is a reasonable ground that they would like to have this document. So under the circumstances, before I put it into a motion, I started by telling that the joint committee hearing has not adjourned, it is still on recess. The concern of Member De La Cruz is that some requested documents have not been submitted by the department heads for the years 2019, 2020. On the other hand, the budget officer is insisting that insofar as documents that have bearings on the proposed appropriation ordinance, it is her contention that these have been submitted already. So it's a matter now of deciding whether we will wait for all these documents of 2019 as requested by some members, 2019 and 2020 or not. So it's all for the committee now to meet again. We will decide once and for all, and we are ready to make a report, hopefully by Tuesday, Mr. Chairman. Before I put it into a motion, I see Member Valesco raising his hand. I will yield in the meantime.
Member Valesco is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My suggestion now, Mr. Chair, is that of course, we acknowledge the sacrifices, the time and efforts that we have extended during the marathon deliberations. So I think there's a need for the chairman and the members of the Appropriations Committee to sit down with the city budget officer, with the city planning officer, and those department heads who have not yet submitted their documents in order for the committee to see and scrutinize on the documents that are still pending upon the request of the committee. And second, my suggestion is for the committee of the whole to sit down once again, again to review if what were the inputs that were considered and reflected in the draft or proposed annual budget, Mr. Chair. So there are two things, or two approaches that I'm adapting here, Mr. Chair. Number one is for the committee to sit down with the city budget officer, with the city planning officer, and those department heads who have not yet submitted their documents to the request of the appropriations chairman. And secondly, we will sit down as a committee of the whole to see what were the items, what were the suggestions that were discussed during the deliberations, and we will see as a whole if what were the items were already included in the proposed annual budget, Mr. Chair. So that is my suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Member Jimenez.
Thank you, Manda. I think we could compromise. Who wants to talk? Member Gingona, how can you?
Member Gingona, Member Jimenez is yielding his time to him.
Thank you, Member Jimenez. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good morning to everyone. As to the suggestion made by Member Valesco to once and for all sit down, may I also suggest that we include a representative or an official from the DBM to be part also of that meeting? The reason being so that in the next year, the ensuing year, somehow or one way or another, pwede man expedite el review, kasi alipala na level diya dun, chenya kita po ko guidance from DBM. Suggestion lang tal, Mr. Chairman.
I think, Mr. Chairman, my position and that of the distinguished gentleman from Santa Maria, that the committee has to reconvene already and terminate this proceeding. If Member Valesco would join me in a joint motion, that we will ask the committees, no longer the committee of the whole, but if it's a committee of the whole, because the committees on appropriation and ordinances have not adjourned yet. They are on, it's only on recess. And upon invitation that we were sent, we voluntarily appeared and made manifestations also during the conduct of the executive hearing. So we will just make a joint motion with Member Valesco that the joint committee here, Joint Committee on Appropriation and Ordinance meet immediately to address these concerns. And perhaps, to my mind, the best that we can do after the conduct of that committee hearing is to immediately submit a report. And I, and submit that report possibly on Tuesday of next week during the conduct of the regular session. If that is not possible, we could move the session next week to a later date, so we could already submit this report. So, Member Valesco, do you join me in the motion for the three committees now to meet immediately? And the concerns that I raise, as well as your concern, be immediately addressed?
Anyway, Consular Cesari Jimenez has already provided his suggestion as well as this representation. May we listen, Mr. Chair, if you may? What is also the thoughts of the city budget officer?
Your Honor, we really appreciate, I appreciate your suggestion. That is right, Your Honor, since many, some departments were not yet able to submit per request of Consular Monsi, it is best that we sit down first before we invite DBM so we can touch out, see, necesita ba'el reports that would have bearing in our budget. And if and when we will be able to agree on the documents that we will be needing, then that's the time, I believe, that's the time that we invite our DBM director, Your Honor.
Yes, Member Valesco.
My first suggestion, Mr. Chair, is, thank you very much, Ma'am Din Din, for supporting that suggestion. The reason why I request and suggest for the holding of a meeting with the Appropriations Committee is that we also have to give respect to the wisdom, authority, and discretion of the committee chairman on appropriations, Mr. Chair, to also exercise his judgment on the budget, Mr. Chair. So I would speak out, Mr. Chair, with my earlier or my first suggestion for the committee headed by Consular, the honorable Crisanto Monsi De La Cruz, to meet with the city budget officer, with the city planning officer, as well as those department heads who have not yet submitted their documents, Mr. Chair. And after that, Mr. Chair, the whole committee can sit down and scrutinize together. What are the items that were suggested, that were recommended during the marathon deliberations? That were included or considered in the proposed annual budget, Mr. Chair? So that is my suggestion, Mr. Chair, and I'm very happy that no less than the city budget officer has also confirmed with the suggestion of this representation. So I think, Mr. Chair, we will also listen to the committee chairman, Mr. Chair, of the apro.
Can we hear to the tentative date? If we could have it on Thursday or Friday? If we could start on Thursday, if we had need more time, we could continue on Friday? May I hear from, I think the one who is presiding is the distinguished floor leader. Any reaction from the chairman, the committee on appropriation, as to the date? I will the chairman, the committee on ordinance, which is the lead committee. Will you, are we, can we have the joint committee hearing convene again on Thursday? Thursday and Friday, so we have enough time? Member Gingona.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, Member Jimenez. Well, this representation and the committee has no problem in meeting the soonest possible time. But I agree also with the suggestion made by Member Valesco for the committees to meet, and then after that, for the committee of the whole, tama ba? Now, once and for all, to scrutinize whatever the committee have discussed?
Most likely, most of the members will be present in the joint committee. So once and for all, we will have actual knowledge of what is being discussed in the joint committee. Can we have it to start on the twelve, Mr. Chairman?
Can we ask the Appropriations Committee?
Yes, because the chairman on the committee on ordinances and resolutions will just accede, no, to whatever the schedule of the chairman of the appropriation. I will, we can set aside, because as for Friday, Mr. Chairman, we have one, two, three barangay ordinances scheduled, but we can set this aside to take up this budget?
This being the most important, I would say in the meantime, the most important measure that we have to act. So jointly with Member Valesco, I move accordingly, Mr. Chairman, that the Joint Committee on Appropriation and Ordinance, which is the lead committee, but actively being headed by the committee chairman on appropriation.
Before we vote, act on that motion, can we ask the thoughts of the chair of the committee on appropriations? Because if I recall it right, the 2021 executive budget referral was specific to the committee on appropriations and ordinance resolution. And as I told, Mr. Chair, if I may, no less than the presiding officer at that time, Honorable John Delipe, declared that we're just on recess, Mr. Chair. So I think I go along with your statement now that we have to give that also honor to the Appropriations Chairman, Mr. Chair, for his thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, before we allow Member to speak, may I be recognized, Mr. Chairman? Can I make a suggestion, na, if okay lang, can we do it on the week of the 16? Next week, kitaman meet? If okay lang? Member Jimenez, Member De La Cruz, okay lang kung ustedes? The week of the 16, so either Monday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week? Para chenilang kita enough time para to, once and for all, make a thorough review?
Mr. Chair, I think the best approach here, Mr. Chair, is to adopt first that suggestion that this representation made, to give also respect to the committee, that the committee will respect, will meet first with some of the department heads, Mr. Chair, as mentioned earlier. And then later, will sit down as a group to review what are the items that were already included, Mr. Chair? So I think that's the best solution that we have attained, Mr. Chair. So I would like to put forward that first suggestion, Mr. Chair, for the committee to sit down with some department heads, since the committee has not yet ruled that the deliberation has already ended. But we are still... but we are still on a recess, Mr. Chair.
So is that going to be a formal motion, Member Valesco?
Yes.
Jointly with Member Jimenez?
Yeah, I so moved, Mr. Chair.
Yes, my only, I, that's a joint motion. My only concern, Mr. Chairman, is we have to fix the dates already because I hope the distinguished, my distinguished colleagues would also not mind that, in particular also of my calendar, tan buskalabida taming kita. So, it's suggested on the 16?
Let's give that discretion, Mr. Chair, to the upper chairman for the settling of the dates, Mr. Chair. At least we already agreed that there will be two meetings, and the dates will be upon the discretion of the honorable chairman, Mr. Chair.
The joint chairman, because the referral was to the two committees, the two chairmans of the committee on appropriation and ordinance resolutions will have to confer and inform us of the agreed dates that they will come up with. And we will have to adjust to their schedule.
No tentative date?
We'll have to wait for them to confirm between Member Gengona and Member De La Cruz to agree on a mutually convenient date for them to meet at the committee level to discuss the remaining issues in the budget review for 2021. So with respect to the motion presented by, let's dispose it first, we leave the dates to the committee.
I hope I'm not very demanding, but the earliest possible time to be included in that resolution. Agreed, Member Valesco, at the earliest?
So any second to the motion?
Did we already dispose my first motion, Mr. Chair?
Not yet, that's why you are disposing.
Okay, I so moved, Mr. Chair.
So seconding?
Nuno.
Nuno, Pareja, Omaga, Perez, Pyok, Edding, Gengona, Vipelago, Tungku Hanapi. Comment, objection? Member Valesco, just to make it clear, this is, the motion is the request for the joint committees to meet.
No, the first motion, Mr. Chair, is for the, as we give also honor to the authority and discretion of the committee chairman and the members of the apro, that the committee will first have to meet with the city budget officer, with the city planning, and those department heads that has yet to submit their documents. If and when, at the end, Mr. Chair, at the end, segundo, at the end, we will scrutinize. If some of the items siyang consider, enya, man refle, na proposed annual budget, Mr. Chair.
The motion is for the two committees to meet with the department's concern, to trash out the remaining issues in the budget review for 2021.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I so moved, Mr. Chair.
Any other comment? Objection? There being none, the same is hereby approved. Then we leave the date to the committees to inform the members of Sangguniang as to what has been agreed upon. Any other? Member Valesco? Akal second?
Second, the Consular Cesari Jimenez. So, hunde again, Mr. Chair, so the second meeting will be the committee of the whole, Mr. Chair.
The committee of the whole, because the referral is to the joint, the invitation to all members.
Because the referral was made to the two committees for the earlier meeting, small group meetings with.
Then after they meet, all the other members may be invited by the joint committees so that they can trash it out before the report is submitted to the plenary. Any other? Floor leader, may I solicit a motion to have the letter of the city budget officer also referred to the joint committees?
Okay, I move accordingly, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, wait, how about the concern of Member Gengona to invite DBM? Shall we do that or later?
Well, the joint committees will have to decide.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll leave it to the discretion of the chair of both committees.
The reason, Mr. Chairman, again, I'd just like to reiterate the reason behind that because I understand DBM has to review pal approved budget, so siguro pwede akatun mang guide so that when it reaches DBM, hindi na lang sila tagda.
Yes, yes, fully noted. So, floor leader, can you proceed with the referral of the letter?
Yes, I move accordingly, Mr. Chairman.
Refer to the committee on apro and ordinance resolution. Next item. We thank the city budget officer for personally appearing today to explain the contents of her letter as to the urgency of the review of the budget for 2021.
Thank you, honor, thank you, your honor, for giving me this opportunity.
Next item.
J. Point two, letter dated November 4, 2020 of the executive assistant for the city mayor, respectfully transmitting the letter dated November 3, 2020 of port manager R. C. D. S. Yumaani, informing that the port of Sangwangga has.